We're good. All right, I got six o'clock, so we'll open up the studies. Open up the study session. I believe we have Andy and Victor here to talk to us about Vancouver Housing Authority. So gentlemen, please approach the podium and enlighten us all.
Thank you. Good evening and thanks for having us. My name's Andy Silver. I'm the CEO of the Vancouver Housing Authority and with me.
And Victor Caesar, I'm the Chief Real Estate Officer at VHA.
So we're gonna give you a little bit of background on VHA's history and and sort of what we do in the community. How we approach housing and rental assistance and some of the services we provide. Please feel free to ask any questions as they come up. In the housing sector, we have a lot of acronyms, so we'll try to stay out of that. But if we say anything that doesn't make sense, please, please jump in with your questions. I'm gonna get us started and then hand over to Victor as we get into the details. See if my clicker works here. Uh oh, we, you know? Hold on. Technology. Well, while we wait to get that going, I can at least start with some of the background and and history for VHA. So the Vancouver Housing Authority, so we were Vancouver's in our name. We were started by the city of Vancouver back in nineteen forty-two in response to the need for workers in the Kaiser shipyards during the war. So the beginning of the Vancouver Housing Authority was to build twelve thousand units, mostly temporary housing for the workers coming in to build the ships. And that was really our start. The our jurisdiction is a little complicated, so we have a rental assistance program that we're gonna talk about that works throughout all of Clark County and all of the jurisdictions. And then when we build our own housing, we can do that in the city of Vancouver and the little bit of the area surrounding it. And then when we're working outside of the city of Vancouver in an area like the city of Battleground, we come to the city council and ask for permission, and that's sort of how it works. There are some places, Seattle and King County are an example where there's a Seattle Housing Authority and a King County Housing Authority that works outside of, thank you, outside of the city. In in our area, there is no other housing authority, so that's sort of why that the setup that we have where VHA does work throughout Clark County. We were also selected back in the late nineties as one of thirty-nine housing authorities in the entire country as part of a special demonstration program with HUD called the Move to Work Program. And it's a, it gives us the flexibility to ask HUD annually for exemptions to certain regulations to respond to local needs. So it's it's a very attractive program that allows us to sort of use some of our funding differently and design programs to, you know, to to get out of some of the federal red tape, basically. See if this works. Yeah, there we go. So really, big picture, there are two main types of programs or types of work that we do at the Housing Authority. There's the rental assistance side, which you maybe have heard the term before, Section Eight or Housing Choice Voucher. And then there's the the real estate. So first, we want to talk a little bit about the the rental assistance. There there are two sort of ways that that we use that rental assistance. There's tenant-based rental assistance where a family or household has the voucher and they can go out into the private market, finds an apartment to rent or a house. And then they pay a percentage of their income towards rent and we pay the difference between the market rent so that they can afford the property. There's also a project-based voucher that that same concept, but instead of with the family and moving from place to place, it stays with a specific apartment. So whoever lives in that apartment benefits from it. But then if they move out, they don't leave with it. The next person who comes in benefits. There's also a number of sort of special program vouchers that we have in in our community. The the veterans vouchers, we have a lot of those called VASH, and those are for veterans that are exiting homelessness. That's a really great program. The family unification vouchers, that's a situation where a parent or parents don't have custody of their children. And the last barrier to getting custody back of their children is having a stable place to live. So that's a program where they can receive a voucher and the families reunified. We have a small number of vouchers for youth exiting foster care. That's a time-limited voucher to help people with that transition. And then we have a few hundred vouchers that are specifically aimed at people who are exiting homelessness and have a disability, and those are the the mainstream vouchers.
Many veterans of theirs. The VASH vouchers be counted?
It's a two hundred and some change in that range.
Are they, are they being fully used?
Or that's a
you have
That's a great question. So we, so the way that is set up is that we administer the rental assistance and the VA provides the case management and does the referrals. For quite some time, we weren't fully utilized because the VA had a major labor shortage on the case management side. That luckily has been resolved and counting the people who have the voucher and are looking for a place to live. It's now fully utilized and we're just applying for more vouchers from HUD because they just put out RFP for more vouchers for VASH. So just to give a sense of the size of the program overall, we administer, we have twenty-seven hundred sort of locally funded, sorry federally funded, but local vouchers under the program. And then we have an additional five hundred people who had a voucher from a different place and moved here and are using their voucher locally. I always, I like to give that, so we administer thirty-two hundred overall. It kind of shows how in demand our community is that we only have about fifteen people who have taken their vouchers and moved someplace else and five hundred have taken their vouchers and and moved into Clark County. On the real estate side, we've got a very diverse portfolio of over thirty-four hundred apartments throughout Clark County. And we'll get more into the specifics, but it's, it really is quite a mix from from units that are fully based off what somebody can afford on their income for people exiting homelessness through different income levels all the way up to some market rate, rate apartments in our portfolio. Some of those apartments are targeted to a specific population like veterans. We have a development on the VA campus targeted to veterans or seniors or other populations, again, people exiting homelessness, people with disabilities. And some of it is just housing that, you know, you you wouldn't necessarily know the the Housing Authority owns and that anybody can can apply. And with that, I think I, oh, sorry, one more slide I'm gonna turn over to Victor. So we wanted to also highlight sort of what are buildings that we currently have in Battleground. And there's, there's sort of broken into two categories. There's the Mill Creek Properties, which both have some apartments for seniors and for families. And then St. Helen's Manor, which is a fully subsidized senior property. The St. Helen's Manor is actually a partner organization. We have several nonprofits that we provide a lot of administrative services for. And one of those is Columbia Nonprofit Housing or CNPH, you might have heard their acronym. So they actually are the owners of of that one, and we provide the property management and service coordination, property management services, things like that. There there's, there's information on this slide also on some waiting list information, specifically people on the waiting lists who have battleground addresses because that was something that that rose, that that people were interested in. I just want to point out, so there's a big difference. There's four, a little over four hundred on the Mill Creek and a smaller number on St. Helen's Manor. That's really due to just technical way that we manage the waitlist. Mill Creek waitlist stayed open for a very long time, whereas St. Helen's, they tend to open it once a year and close it. So I, you know, if you, if you're looking at those numbers and and wondering why the discrepancy, it's it's not really based off the need, but the, I think the message that comes through is there's a lot of people who live in Battleground right now who are interested in these properties.
Quick question on the the Mill Creek.
Yeah.
Noticing that some are subsidized, some are not. Is that by design or is that people who have income has taken them out of subsidization subsidization range?
It's it's by design, so those are project, those are project-based subsidies that are tied to the some of the apartments. And I, and it's a good question because I guess some of the non-subsidized apartments could be, could have somebody who has a tenant-based voucher living there, and we wouldn't necessarily know that and count it in that slide, but you know, part of what we look at when we're putting together properties is sort of that mix on the need and and what levels of income you want to hit and how many need to be subsidized. And then sometimes as well, it's a way to make a development, to make the finances balance out. Yeah. All right, so I'm gonna hand it over to Victor.
All right, so I'm just gonna run through the type of housing that we have in VHA's portfolio. And really, our portfolio is broken up into three different buckets, as Andy alluded, Andy alluded to. So we have subsidized housing where the tenants pay a percentage of their income towards rent. And then we have low-income housing, and really, that's that zero to sixty percent AMI, area median income for housing. And then we've got our middle-income market rate housing portfolio, that's sort of that sixty-plus percent AMI. So I'm just gonna step through those. And so as I said, the subsidized housing, there's really different buckets of subsidized housing. So there's project-based vouchers that Andy mentioned, but we have public housing. And right now, VHA is in the process of actually ending our public housing program. We have a hundred and eighty-nine units in Clark County and we'll be converting those to a project-based voucher program. And we've got the Rental Assistance Demonstration Program, or called RAD program, which is some form of public housing that we converted into RAD. We've got project-based rental assistance contracts, project rental assistance contracts, because I feel like HUD loves an acronym. So the PBRAs and the PRACs, but these are all just types of programs. And then VHA, through our Move to Work Authority, created a rent buy-down program. So it's not fully subsidized, but we, VHA, buy down the rent to make it affordable to folks in the community. So when we look at low-income housing and middle-income housing and disregard, there's a typo for the eighty percent AMI. But really, these two buckets, the low-income housing program, there's really a financing mechanism in place. So low-income housing tax credits are really the leading way that we build low-income housing in this country. Middle-income housing is a little bit more challenging, really VHA's strategy to getting that type of housing in our portfolios via acquisitions. So right now is honestly a great time for VHA to add this type of housing because for us, we get better access to interest rates. While we all know interest rates are not great in this country right now. It's actually prime opportunity for housing authorities across the country to acquire existing housing and convert it into middle-income housing. But we've also been exploring partnerships, i.e. the Eden Park Project. So the low-income housing tax credit program, it's called LI-Tech. A lot of folks think it's a HUD program. It's really an IRS program. So the IRS divvies out tax credits to a housing finance agency. So in the state of Washington, we have the Washington State Housing Finance Commission, who administers the program. So once they deliver the tax credits to, WISHFIC is what we call them. We, as an agency, apply to the, for the funding, we receive the tax credits. We then reach out and do an RFP to get bank investment to fund these projects. And in return, the tax credit investors get tax write-offs for ten years. And there's really two main buckets of LI-Tech, so there's the nine percent LI-Tech program and the four percent LI-Tech program. The nine percent LI-Tech program, I should rewind, so WISHFIC is to set the priority bucket. So since nine percent LI-Tech covers seventy percent of your project's expenses, so very lucrative. So the state of Washington has designated those into really three main buckets, so senior housing, homeless housing and farmworker housing. Clark County does not qualify for farmworker housing, so typically we fund any of our senior housing developments or any of our homeless projects through the nine percent LI-Tech program. And we, as a county, actually work together, so the city of Vancouver, Clark County, and the Housing Authority, we sort of reach out to see who's in the community and we put forth what's called a priority project. Years past, we used to compete against the entire state for nine percent tax credits. Now, we sort of have a streamlined pipeline, so we know what's coming in our community. The other program is the four percent LI-Tech program. Four percent LI-Techs only cover about thirty percent of the project cost. So in tune, what we do is we issue private activity bonds, which is really what you're seeking when you go after four percent tax credits. And then the gap fillers, what we call soft sources of funds, so that's federal, state, local business philanthropic sources of funds are how we sort of fill, and that's how we build our capital stack. So the next thing I want to talk about is it's called a TEFRA hearing, so it's the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act of nineteen eighty-two. So the TEFRA hearing is a requirement when we issue private activity bonds. And I wanted to make reference to this because as we move forward with our Weaver Creek project, you will be hearing, you will be hosting a TEFRA hearing for us. So what a TEFRA hearing is, is a public hearing held by the issuer of the bonds. But since the city of Vancouver created the Housing Authority, when we do projects in the city of Vancouver, we can hold that hearing for ourselves, and then the city of Vancouver certifies that we actually did the process. When we step outside of the city of Vancouver, the local jurisdiction actually has to do that. So in this case, the city of Battleground would have to do, hold the public hearing for VHA and then certify that the process. And it's a little bit confusing, I would say, because you aren't on the hook to repay the bonds, VHA and the properties are on hook to pay the bonds, but it's really just more of a process that we have to go through. And back to Andy.
So before I I move on to the social service partners, now that you're all experts in low-income housing tax credit development, I think the 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 key takeaways from that, there, there's a set sort of program to hit the the lower income levels. And there's a whole mechanism with that. The Weaver Creek project that Victor mentioned is an example of a of a four percent tax credit that's that's trying to hit the sixty percent of area median income level. And then when we're trying to do a little bit higher than that and get a mix of incomes, that's when we use our VHA's bonding authority. So nine percent tax credits, you get the lowest incomes. Four percent, you have a mix of of tax credit equity and bonds. And then the bond ones, you just have the debt. We, part of our mission, I mean, our core of our mission is providing housing that's affordable to people. But housing is not the only thing that people need in our lives to thrive. We we see it as a platform for people. So with that comes, you know, depending on the population we're serving, what their needs are. You know, what kind of partnerships in the community can we have to make sure that whatever barriers they face, they can overcome and and achieve what they want to achieve. So we do some of that in-house at the Vancouver Housing Authority. We have a supportive services department. St. Helen's Manor, for example, has a VHA service coordinator who works with the residents there. And then we do a lot of it through nonprofit partnerships, so from behavioral health, primary care, you know, all all kinds of of different partnerships to help make sure that that people are getting the services that they need. And then the last thing that we wanted to highlight, I kind of touched on this earlier, is that we try to build the capacity of other nonprofits in the community. So I mentioned Columbia Nonprofit Housing, they're an independent affordable housing nonprofit, but they they don't have the scale to afford their own staff, so they contract with us to provide staff. Victor's actually the part-time executive director for them. Council for the Homeless, a nonprofit you may have heard of. They use us for some backend administrative services like HR and IT. Bridgeview is a is a nonprofit that provides services to the community that, again, they're VHA employees that were loaning to the nonprofit. So whenever we can, we're we're trying to build capacity in the community. And with that, I think we'll open it up to see if there are any questions.
So your property out here is Weaver Creek, is that correct?
That's the one that, that's the tax credit one that we're working on.
Yeah, it's gonna be over off of Park, right? How will that one be? What is, what is the mechanism for that one? Is it all low income? Is it the credits?
So yeah, it's a low-income housing tax credit project, and right now, what we've currently been funded is up to And right now, what we've currently been funded is up to 60% AMI units. We are exploring during, it's called income averaging, where you can actually go up to 80%. I have to sort of spread the range of the folks living in the development, but that's sort of where we're at right now in that project.
And that's how many units?
It's 80 units, but we have a development agreement in the works that if you approve, would go up to 100 units.
And then a a smaller portion of those units would be subsidized. Like there are some units for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. So you'd see sort of the income range through that.
Thank you.
You mentioned Mill Creek being privately owned and then you guys manage it. How does that work? How does somebody own the building and then you guys manage it?
So so we actually own Mill Creek, but St. Helens Manor is owned by the nonprofit Columbia Nonprofit Housing. So Columbia Nonprofit Housing contracts with us to to do that. Is that?
I mean, how does it work? Like if we were to have a project like that, how does? I don't understand how a private business owner can get the tax credits and everything and then have VHA run the units.
So in a, so St. Helens Manor is a little bit different because it's an older one that was, I don't believe it was a tax credit, right? Yeah. But but so if we were developing one today, like like Weaver Creek, for example, the in the low income housing tax credit setup, which is admittedly complicated, there is a partnership that is formed that includes VHA, if it was our project, and the tax credit investor. So basically, we're applying as the project sponsor to the state to get the low income housing tax credits. And then in essence, we sort of sell them to the investor. The investor gives upfront capital to build the building and then in return gets a tax break over 12 years, which is equal, if you add it all up, to to more money than what they gave us to build the building. And then there's a partnership that they're a part of, we're a part of, and through the partnership, we manage and operate the building.
And is there a sunset for that at all?
Yeah, usually in those, so they they basically have to stay in the deal for the 12 years to get their tax benefits. And then generally, they negotiate between like year 12 and 15 and exit where the building goes back to the VHA.
Oh, okay. So VHA would take ownership then?
Yeah, unless we re-syndicate and did another tax credit partnership. But to get the tax credit partnerships, we're committing to the state to keep it affordable for 40, 50 years. So the building isn't really worth, like theoretically, the tax credit partner could could try to sell it. You know, could say you have to pay us a bunch of money for it. But because of the restrictions on the building that that really restrict the revenue, it just kind of comes back to the the sponsor.
And do they have to repay the tax credit if they do sell within the 12, after the 12 years?
Not if they've made it through their compliance period. So so basically, they're, what they're, what they're doing, let's say it's a, they give us $10 million to build the building and then they get, you know, over 12 years, $11 million. That's basically the, that's the, that's the benefit of the program is that's how they get these private actors to kind of pay the money to build the buildings upfront. And that system builds 90 something percent of affordable housing in the US. And and it's a pretty set, you only get so many projects a year, which is why VHA is trying to get creative and try to figure out how we can do some additional projects outside that system.
So one more question.
Yeah.
Are partnerships like that good for the community then?
Partnerships like that are definitely good for the community. I mean, you're you're talking to two affordable housing developers, so we could certainly find things to complain about, about the low income housing tax credit structure. But it is very beneficial because it it is the basically the only way right now to kind of build housing that serves income levels that the market isn't hitting.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I I don't really have a question, more of a comment, I guess. I thank you guys, Andy and Victor, for coming down and presenting. I know, Andy, we had a meeting a little while back and I'm looking forward to our tour coming up shortly. And just wanted to thank you guys and appreciate you doing what you do and extending a hand over to Battleground to see what we can do for affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just echo that. Appreciate you guys coming up here up north. So yeah, very informative and a lot to take in. So you were right, a lot of acronyms.
Well, sorry about that, but thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And is that the only agenda item we have on that first day session? All right. Well, then that closes the study session and we'll be back at seven, seven, I'm sorry, what? Yeah, for the regular meeting.
Thank you.
Stand up for me, it makes me rush. It got seven o'clock. We ready? All right, I'd like to call this a wriggler meeting of the battleground city council order on June 3rd, 2024. Those please able, please rise, we pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands on its top, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen?
Call roll and please comments. No more.
Mayor McCoy.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bowman.
Here.
Councilmember Ferrer.
Present.
Councilmember DeRozier.
Here.
Councilmember Cortez. Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Overholzer.
Here.
And the clerk is present. That concludes the roll.
Thank you, Ms. Hillyly. Agenda approval's up next. I'll entertain a motion or if somebody needs something removed or.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda. I would like to remove under the mayor's report the proclamation Pride. I would like to, uh, remove, under the mayor's report, the proclamation Pride Month, June 2024.
I will second that.
Um. So, in order to amend agenda, you only need four votes. If you want to wait until we get to that and make the motion, uh, then that would only require, that would be a different vote. So if we, amending agenda is a majority vote. So do we want to take a vote on amending the agenda? How do we do that, Ms. Clerk? You recommend? Sorry, is that better? My bad. So here's, here's what the, just to explain to everybody, we have a process for proclamations where two-thirds have to be an approval to allow the mayor to do a proclamation. However, agenda approval only requires four votes, or amending the agenda only requires four votes.
So with that. Then I would like to waive my amendment of the agenda and move to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
Yeah, let's, uh, the first, the motion was not in good order.
Yeah.
So I will accept the, the new motion. Do I have a second?
Go ahead.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, sorry about that, it's confusing, but we'll get through it. Let's, uh, continue to appreciate the cooperation from the crowd. I know it's, uh, uh, an issue that we all want to talk about. So, uh, first up, we have, uh, council member reports. EMS District Two, Councilmember Overholzer.
Yes, uh, we had our EMS District Two meeting this morning. Um, as some of you may know, may not know, we got a letter from the city, uh, from Eric Holmes, um, stating that at the end of the year, uh, when their contract is up with AMR, their RFP has an option in it to eliminate the, um, agreement with EMS Two and be City of Vancouver only. Um. As you may know or may not know, that is not advantageous for the City of Battleground. Um, so the City of Vancouver gave us three options, option A, option B, and option C. We chose option A, which was to, um, basically continue on the agreement and piggyback for 2025, the year of 2025, and, uh, then their contract will take over for the last four years and we'll have to figure something out in that time. Um, and so we'll be reaching out, looking for options, um, on what's best for Battleground and the rest of EMS Two going forward.
Is there no option to get on there past that? So this is, we are on our own.
Currently, there is not an option to continue with the City of Vancouver. Um, again, that is, that is the statement that was made, is we had to make a decision by Saturday and they were going to move forward one way or the other.
Understood. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? That's a big deal for those that aren't, and that's, uh, it's a big one. Any other reports from councillors that attended meetings on behalf of the city?
Okay, it moves us on to mayor's report. Start off with the Memorial Day ceremony. Uh, thank you to Alicia, she's here somewhere, uh, for setting that up, uh, and for Public Works. Uh, it was a great ceremony, well-attended, appreciated everybody being out there. The bagpipes were really cool, I thought, uh, and Taps was, uh, well done.
Yeah, I agree, that young gentleman who played the bagpipes was very impressive. Uh, I, I wanted to shake his hand but didn't get a chance to. And I'd also like to thank the staff for doing that, as well as Tricia Davis, um, sorry, Counselor Davis, um, and her little, her, the pins that she made for all of the veterans. Um, I was very proud to wear my pin, so thank you for doing that.
And, uh, next up on the, uh, mayor's report, uh, for those that aren't aware, the second graders from Tuuk's come to City Hall once a year. Uh, it's a pretty neat, uh, little exercise they do. Last year, they're, they voted to name our mascot Benny. This year, they voted on what the new surface of the splash pad will look like. So you can see by their stars. It's a denim crowd. So it's pretty neat. Very well behaved second graders. I hope we can all learn from their example. And we are doing so, we are doing so far so well. So, uh, that was it for the second graders. Thank you again, that was Alicia set that up. Every department had a table, we had finance, we had public works, we had engineering, so they got to learn a little bit of everything. Even Rob was there for administration. All right, this brings us to the Pride proclamation, and I'm just gonna make an announcement and then I'll, so, as part of the ceremonial duties of the mayor, I'm charged with the approval of proclamations at my discretion. Proclamations are not statements of policy, but are a means by which the city can recognize an event group or individual. Request for proclamation should be directed to the mayor or the city clerk.
All right, uh, so I would like to make a motion now. I'd like to, um, remove the proclamation, uh, from the council or the mayor's report.
I will second this.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, call the question.
Okay, question's been called, so that's no debate.
Can I make a point though?
There's no debate on call the question, we will vote on call the question. Roll call, please. Call the question means there's no debate, we go straight to the, uh, straight to the vote.
Hold on.
It's a majority, we'll, we're voting on whether to limit debate. Correct. A yes vote, a yes vote takes us straight to the vote on the proclamation with no debate on the proclamation. Does that make sense? Did I get that right, Ms. Hilly? On the, yeah, this is.
You are correct, Mr. Mayor.
This is just a vote to limit debate on the proclamation. This is not a vote on the proclamation. Yes limits debate and we go straight to the vote.
That is correct.
A no vote allows debate. That does not require a second, I do not believe. Supermajority is required, five votes will be required.
Mr. Mayor, did you want, uh, a roll call vote for the call the question?
You can do a voice, it doesn't matter to me.
Okay. So, like, no?
Yes, limits debate, no, allows debate.
Okay, okay, so yes.
Councilmember Ferrer, how do you vote?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember DeRozier, how do you vote? Councilmember Cortez, how do you vote?
No.
Mayor McCoy, how do you vote?
No.
Deputy Mayor Bowman, how do you vote?
No.
Councilmember Davis, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Overholzer, how do you vote?
No.
Motion, motion fails by my math?
That is correct. Four noes, two, three yeses.
So, uh, now I'll open it up for discussion. If anybody is so inclined, please, uh, as soon as the panels come back. Well, sometimes they don't come back. So we'll just, uh, and I'm going to be enforcing Robert rules, I, uh, on this, you speak once, we go through. And then if somebody else wants to speak, we go through twice. There are no third round of comments for this for, for, uh, council members. I can't, yeah, so we'll just, uh, so go ahead and chime in, but, uh, one per round and then I'll tell you when the second round starts. So I, I don't have the pad, so just speak up.
Oh.
What's that? Oh. Well, somebody can just speak up.
Okay, I guess I'll go, I'll go first. So, um, I'm going with, uh, I'm approving this motion, um, to remove the proclamation because based on our policies, um, under Section 21A2, proclamation should not be considered that are potentially controversial, political, or religious in nature unless approved by the two-thirds majority of council members.
Mr. Rogers? You don't have to, I'm sorry, I'm just, I don't have the panel, so I don't know. Mr. Cortez?
Yeah, I'll say something. Um. I think that's a, that's kind of a way to choose not to speak about something, is to call it controversial. Last, two weeks ago, we did a proclamation to, to, uh, recognize Law Enforcement and Police Week. And, uh, most people in this room would probably support that. Uh, if you get on Facebook and you look at the Battleground site and you see a state patrolman sitting at Dick's Tire Factory, not on the sidewalk, but in the parking lot, doing traffic enforcement, you will see that there's many comments about what police officers should be doing. Not supporting our police officers. Controversial, you could say, in nature. Um, a couple of years ago, we had a whole movement on defunding police. Controversial. Um, depending where you're at, it can be very controversial. Portland, it was much more controversial than it here is here in Battleground, but it's still controversial. When I was mayor, uh, actually when I got in council in 2012, uh, one of the things that we weren't doing was having, at our Christmas celebration, uh, we weren't having prayer. Asked Pastor Stanton if he would offer the prayer, he did, and for the next 12 years, we've done prayer at our Christmas celebration, holiday celebration, whatever you want to call it. That was controversial, still is today. Every year, we get messages about forcing kids, they say, kids to sit there and listen to prayer. And guess what we did? We continued with prayer. And that's controversial. To some people, it's not, to others, it is. And so it's easy for us to say something's controversial when we don't agree with it. It's hard for us to recognize things that are right in the community and right because we need to do it, and not use that as a crutch. And so we can say, almost every proclamation we do can be considered controversial. If you go onto Wikipedia, there's a list of about 50 controversial to some of you, maybe not to others. I think the only one that we can probably agree on is July being Ice Cream Month not being controversial. Okay, and so Black History Month, Indigenous People, Women's Month, January 16th could be controversial to some people. That's Religious Freedom Day. So it's interesting how we get fired up and, and we'll come into a room and, uh, I told the mayor, the one thing we may agree on tonight is the, the Pledge of Allegiance. The other stuff we may fight about, but at the end of the day, there's a lot of things that are controversial, but this proclamation.
Could you freeze for one minute?
No, sorry, ma'am, you're out of order. If you speak again.
Council, council isn't held to one minute. It's our meeting, so we're gonna be able to speak. So when, when we say that, um, that things are controversial, it's concerning to me because there will be, depending on how this goes, we've been, we've had some attorneys tell us proclamation should be done if you do this. I will tell you this, this is the first time I've seen most of you guys in this room. I've been here for 12 years. That's sad. You know? No, we've done a lot of stuff that was controversial. We did this Pride proclamation last year, and the year before, and the year before. The only time we've had this room with this many people in it, there's two times in the history that I've been involved with the city. One was a police chief that got fired. The second one was when we gave Ben Lemmons the key to the city and made him the honorary ambassador for Battleground. And if you go to Fred Meyer, you know who Ben is. Okay? That was controversial at one time. So, I mean, it's, it's a cop-out to me. Um, I think that, uh, the mayor has always had the ability to do a proclamation. What we did, uh, depending on how this goes tonight, if this goes three, four, this will be a minority overruling a majority vote. And every single one of you would say that that's not right. But if it goes three, four tonight, it will be a minority overruling a majority vote. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody down there for their first time through? No?
Yeah. Uh, here's what I, here's what I have written, because I believe love and acceptance are the core values of our community, that this month is nationally recognized as lesbian, gay, bi, trans, and queer questioning. Battleground does support dignity, equality, and fundamental civil rights for all in our community. We do demonstrate our community's values of caring and fairness by treating all citizens with respect and kindness through family and community. Battleground does encourage vital conversations and the cultivation of a climate of belonging and welcoming to all people. These are the values of our society. This vote to remove was because of the controversial aspect, and I'm gonna say it is controversial. We have over a hundred emails in our inbox, last time I counted, in favor or against this proclamation. I don't know, uh, again, I haven't been here as long as some of you, but I would question how many times you've gotten over a hundred emails on one subject in your inbox. Um, it just makes it evident to me that it is potentially controversial, but I do believe that, uh, I was taught to love my neighbors, I love myself. I don't necessarily disagree with the wording in the proclamation. As a matter of fact, I was one of the council members that reached out to the person writing it and, and, uh, offered edits. We did not come to an agreement on that, um, and that's okay. We don't always have to agree on everything, but that doesn't change what we stand for, the morals and the values that we hold true. That's all I have.
So I use my first time through, I'll just give you what my rules are for accepting a proclamation that comes to the city. Three rules. It's requested, the person will be here to accept it, and it's a nationally recognized day, week, or month. Those are the three rules. Uh, as far as controversial, I believe that's problematic in our, in our laws, or in our governor's manual. There's a lot of things that have been controversial in this country. I don't need to tell any of you what some of those are. If you look to your right and left, you're seeing somebody at some point, if they weren't a white male landowner, they were controversial. It was controversial for women to vote. It was controversial for blacks to ride in the wrong part of the bus. You're on the wrong side of this. Open it up for second comments now. Mr. Cortez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, well, first of all, I thought everybody was, come here to, to talk about water, sewer, and fixing our streets, but I guess not the case. Uh, but we'd love to have you here, we want to talk about water, sewer, and fixing our streets. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I really don't have a lot more to say than what you and Deputy Mayor Bowman said. You said it so eloquently, and I fully support your position. Quite frankly, when I was mayor, when I was in that seat, we did the same proclamation, and none of you were here. I'd like to know if anybody here on council has organized a lot of you to come here tonight. And my suspicions would be, if I did a public records request, that I would find out that people on council organized this. You know, let's be frank, ladies and gentlemen, the only thing divisive about this proclamation are the people pushing to kill it. They are the ones that are truly offended. You are offended by recognizing historically marginalized groups of our citizens in this community. I suggest you seek therapy.
Hold on. Order, order. I'll do this one more time. Order. 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 One more time. Stop, stop, ma'am, this is your last warning. Okay? Let, sir, that's yours. All right, let's go.
Okay. So, Mr. Mayor, I would like to state my personal opinion. I value diversity of our community. I support the LGBTQ rights at the local, the national, and the global level. I recognize the importance of policies that protect. I recognize the importance of policies that protect against discrimination and promote inclusion. We hear you, we see you. I welcome you. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Clerk, can we put the proclamation up on the screen, please? That's what I was trying, I wasn't trying to get the closer to my bald head. Is there anybody else on council that wants to talk? So I'm, I would like the proclamation put up on the screen. Because I think a lot of us are fighting over something we've never seen. I'm gonna give you all a time, some time to read that. You want to take a minute? Uh, I don't think I can read it, no. I, I'm, if, if you like it, right, I can read it, uh, it won't be official proclamation, that's fine, there we go. Can we see that in the back? No, all right. Um, I'll read it after, uh, Ms. Davis wanted to speak, so I'll let her speak and then.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this proclamation should say all citizens, not a certain group. Um, I think that that is my, um, biggest issue is battleground is all our citizens. Um, all of us should feel safe walking down the streets. All of us should feel comfortable partaking in any festivities. This is actually, um, in my mind, it is pulling out, uh, a group of our citizens who should not be looked upon differently. We should all feel safe. If this said a proclamation for all battleground citizens, I'm all in. But to pull out a group and then to be told that I'm divisive is something that I cannot understand. If I see you on the streets, we are all God's people and we all look the same in his eyes. So that is my issue. So if a proclamation comes up and it says all citizens of battleground, I'm all in. Thank you.
So, um, with, with the, can you not read it still in the back? Okay. What's that? Uh, whereas the month of June is generally recognized nationally as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer questioning LGBTQ Pride Month to commemorate the rights and basic protections for the LGBTQ community and to actively discourage discrimination against LGBTQ individuals. And whereas battleground supports dignity, dignity, equality, and fundamental civil and human rights for all in our community. And whereas we can demonstrate our community's values of caring and fairness by treating all citizens, including the LGBT community, with respect and kindness through family and community inclusion. And whereas battleground encourages vital conversations and the cultivation of a climate of belonging and welcoming to all citizens, including our LGBTQ friends, neighbors, and family members. So, Councilmember Ferrer?
Yeah, just going, um, just putting it out there where my stance is, I do agree. I, I spoke with, uh, the person who put this proclamation together and we had to sit down and I was, um, very excited to meet this young lady and got to speak with her. And I let her know my stance from the very beginning was that I wanted, I was more excited to see like a, um, what was, a, a quality proclamation or a non-discrimination proclamation because we have so many, um, you know, a big diversity that's coming here, a lot of more, a lot more people moving here to this area that have different nationalities. And I thought it would be great for us to have the opportunity to put something together that made everybody feel safe and equal, um, in our communities. Because, um, like everybody's already stated that I too, my mother used to travel the world and she would teach me about how beautiful other cultures are and that we all bring something to the table and we should be respectful to each one of us. And that's what I was excited to see, um, rather than just, um, just, um, separating a small group because when we're walking down the street, each one of us should be friendly to one another and treat one another with respect. So, yeah.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Bowman?
So I think part of this is just maybe lack of understanding what a proclamation is for. If we want a proclamation for everybody and everyone needs to get a ribbon to go home, then good, we'll give you one. But proclamations are for organizations. So when we do, when we do National Women's Month, you just lost half the room, you didn't include all of them. When you do Mental Health Awareness Month, when you do Black History Month, when you do all these other things, you lose half the room. Or more. And, and so that's just a cop out to say, well, it doesn't include everybody. Because a proclamation isn't going to include everybody. We recognized one person, one person, and made him the ambassador of the city of battleground, we didn't make all of you that. No one else in this room has a key to the city except for him. But we should have included all of you, apparently. And it's amazing to me how we, we will, we will throw out words like woke and council culture and all this stuff. And it only works if it's not something that I want counseled. It only works if it's, if, if you offend me, then I'll counsel it. And that, that's the thing, I mean, I, I can go right down this list and show you time and time again where these proclamations do not include everybody. And they shouldn't because that's not what they're for. But if that's what we're gonna go by is because we all need to be included, then we'll get some ribbons and give everyone some ribbons and so that everybody can have their, you know, participation badge.
All right. Yeah, Councilmember DeRozier?
So in regards to this being controversial, I will say that this is the first time I have ever received so much hate-filled emails. I honestly could not believe the hatred that I heard in the, read in the emails for our fellow man and not just loving people for who they are and allowing them to exist in our world. So I just want to say to everybody in marginalized communities that I see you, I hear you, you are welcome. Everyone's welcome, but I especially want you to know that, um, but, uh, it, it was really hard reading all those emails, uh. I'm sure they'll be out with a public records request, so you'll get to see what, what we read and how much hate was in those emails. Thank you.
And I'll, uh, I'll just sum it up, I, I think that's a really good point, Councilmember DeRozier, you know, I was kind of, uh, on the fence on whether we, a proclamation was warranted, you know, uh, because I was hearing a lot of, a, a lot of issues, and then as I got more and more vitriol and filled emails, I'm like, wow, if this group isn't marginalized and discriminated against, I've not seen a group that is more discriminated against in this group based on those emails. I mean, it is shockingly, I mean, and most of them quoted scripture. I, I was shocked to my core, absolutely shocked, but here we are. So we're fighting over words, we're fighting over making somebody feel safe. And that's what we're gonna vote on. Because this says nothing, if you look at that last sentence, it's I, Troy McCoy. And if this, if this proclamation gets voted down, this will be the last proclamation till we get another one presented to us in June, if we do. But I can't see how a protected class gets voted down and then we let other protected classes come in. I as, as a as if you did share responsibility to the city, this will be our last proclamation as I'm mayor, if it gets voted down. Please, order, order, please. So, uh, let's, let's go to the vote. And a yes, I'm sorry, what? A yes will remove this proclamation from our agenda. And three, three yeses will remove it. Wait, yeah, my panel's not working, we might have to do verbal. It's fine, just do verbal. Yeah, mine's, mine says it's disabled. It's fine. It's okay. Just remind council, a yes removes it.
Councilmember Ferrer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember DeRozier, how do you vote?
No.
Councilmember Cortez, how do you vote?
No.
Mayor McCoy, how do you vote?
No.
Deputy Mayor Bowman, how do you vote?
No.
Councilmember Davis, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Overholzer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on. We have the Salmon Creeks Natural Area Expansion. Kevin Tyler's here to give us, uh, uh, Clark County Lands Manager, Public Works Parks and Lands Division. Do we need a break, does anybody want to leave the room or we, we're, we here for the long haul? All right. I'm sorry, the, the, we're not reading the proclamation, we're moving on. But, you know, I know this is, I know you think this is your meeting, but we're good. We're, we're done, ma'am, that's your final warning. Please.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Kevin Tyler, uh, lands manager with the Parks and Lands Division of Clark County Public Works. And, uh, with me here today is Danielle Cowley, our lands coordinator. And we're here to talk about an opportunity to expand, uh, upon the Salmon Morgan Creeks and Gordy Joma Family Natural Areas. If you could go to the next slide when, when that gets up.
That's it, we can take a quick, you want to take a quick two-minute break, Mr. Lee? Yeah, let's go ahead and take just a, just a quick five-minute break, so if any, you know, I know there's some people that probably don't, are, are less interested in the rest of the agenda, so we'll just take a quick five-minute break, we'll be back at seven thirty-nine.
Mikes are hot.
You've all been warned, please don't make me start ejecting, or, uh, having people escorted out. We have business to tend to. All right, Mr. Tyler, sorry for that. Uh, acquisition to expand Salmon Morgan Creeks and Gordy, that's a mouthful, I'll let you do it.
It is a mouthful, good, good evening. I'll, I'll start from the beginning again. My name is Kevin Tyler, uh, I'm a, I'm the lands manager, uh, within the Parks and Lands Division of Clark County Public Works. And with me is Danielle Cowley, our lands coordinator. Uh, we're here to discuss an opportunity to expand upon property that we call Salmon Morgan Creeks and Gordy Joma.
Mics are hot.
Meeting's in order now. You've all been warned, please don't make me start ejecting or having people escorted out. We have business to tend to. All right. Mr. Tyler, sorry for that. Acquisition to expand Salmon Morgan Creeks and Gordy, that's a mouthful, I'll let you do it.
It is a mouthful. Good, good evening. I'll I'll start from the beginning again. My name is Kevin Tyler. I'm a I'm the Lands Manager within the Parks and Lands Division of Clark County Public Works. And with me is Danielle Cowley, our Lands Coordinator. We're here to discuss an opportunity to expand upon property that we call Salmon Morgan Creeks and Gordy Joma Family Natural Areas. So those are, those are two natural areas along Salmon Creek. Next slide, please. So in August of twenty twenty two, the county acquired one hundred and eighteen acres of what was formerly known as the Cedars-on-Sammon Creek Golf Course. Was renamed the Gordy Joma Family Natural Area in honor of the Joma family who sold it to the county. Next slide, please. And last year, the Cowlyts Indian Tribe applied for and received a grant to design the Salmon Creek Reconnection Project. That's the right one. That's the right, that's the right slide. You're you're good, yeah. So the tribe applied for a grant to design a salmon Salmon Creek Rest Reconnection Project within that Gordy Joma Family Natural Area. At the same time, the county also began taking steps to start a master planning process for the property. Our goal is to have the master plan process and the salmon recovery project working close collaboration with one another. Just leave it on this slide. We're good here. In in response to community outreach that started this year with both the Salmon Creek Reconnection Project that the tribe's running and the county's master plan. We heard from a neighboring property owner that their land was for sale. And after evaluating that property against the criteria in our in the county's natural areas acquisition plan, county staff initiated discussions. Danielle's been leading those discussions in an attempt to acquire the property. You can see in the the figure here, there's some blue turquoise outline. That's twelve point seven acres. That's right next to the county owned property. The two properties together that the county own and and if we acquire this one together will create two hundred and seven acres of essentially natural area that all, almost all of it sits within the city of Battleground. So the the acquisition presents an opportunity for us to expand upon those natural areas. So staff presented this acquisition to county council last week on May twenty eighth. And council asked us to reach out to the city just for feedback on the acquisition. Council inquired just generally about support for the acquisition and also if it has any impact on the the city's future plans, in particular plans for housing due to the ongoing discussions regarding the the update to the county's comprehensive plan. Next slide, please. So this parcel provides similar natural resources to the adjacent. If you can go back one slide, thank you. Provides similar natural resources as the adjacent Salmon Morgan Natural Area. If any of you visited that, there's trails through the site including high quality wetlands and then flood plain and riparian areas of Morgan Creek. These provide Morgan Creeks provide provides critical habitat for winter steelhead and Coho salmon for those of us who are fishermen. Approximately two thirds of the property is encumbered by critical areas. So that means it's not not easily developed. And then on the south end of the property, there's an access road to the city. The city has a pump station in that location. This access area could potentially provide a future outlet for the neighboring subdivision around the old Cedars Golf Course and then potentially public access routes to the natural areas. Next slide, please. So moving forward, the county hopes to execute a purchase and sale agreement with the property owner and close on the property before the end of the year. Meanwhile, the county and the tribe are going to continue to work together. We've finalized an agreement with the tribe on how we're going to work together, how we're going to collaborate on those two projects. Salmon Restoration and then what we call nature based recreational master planning. Nature based recreational master planning is things like trails, picnic tables, picnic benches, parking bathrooms, things of that nature. Think about what you might see at a state park. And then we hope to fold this new property into that county's master planning efforts and in having community engagement throughout the whole process. Last slide, please. So just want to take this opportunity to thank you for your time and consideration this evening. Danielle and I are here to answer any questions you might have specific to the property. Danielle can probably answer those questions. Process, I can help answer those questions. And again, I'm also planning to relay any comments or questions or concerns that you might have to our county council. We will be in front of them again tomorrow.
Again, my panel's in Oregon, so just be respectful and talking.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, number one. What what are you looking for from us? Just saying yeah, we don't care. Because it's, I mean, it's mostly wetlands. It kind of fits with what's out there. My my only thing that's a little concerning is that the county comes to us wanting a yea or nay so they can have this done this week. I think if you're going to take something back to the council, tell them it'd be nice if they realize that there's other people in the county they should be talking to sooner than later.
Yeah.
But I I don't, I don't have a problem with it. I think it kind of fits with what's out there. I know it's in the city limits, but I think it was brought in when we brought in the golf course and well, we didn't. When the golf course was brought in. And I think it kind of goes along with that and and ties in with what they're doing already out there. But it'd be nice if it's not going to happen again. There's no more land there, but it'd be nice if they talked to us a little sooner.
Thank you. I appreciate your sentiment and would like you to know that it was council's idea for us to come to you. So
Good.
We're trying to respect private property interests and rights with purchase and sale negotiations, which can be sensitive. And so yeah, we we didn't have an opportunity to engage with the city. And so we're doing that now.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Thanks. Thank you for coming. I I have a question more or less for our city staff, for Mark, and I know Sam was involved, but me and Kristen. What are we looking at this property as? Can you help me and figure out what Battleground has any ideas or give us some focus, please?
Do you know the zoning off the top of your head? R three. So right now it's zoned R three, which would be three units per acre. I think a few people said, but a majority of the property's wetlands. So you know, at best, you're probably going to get a couple lots out of it. So Sam looked at it when Kevin reached out and he thought we could easily make it up elsewhere within the city. My big issue was protecting our utilities and the road there. So like Kevin said, we have a pump station to the east. We've got all the rights for it, so it they wouldn't be able to do anything anyway, but making sure that that area is kept clear. And then in our transportation plan, I'm sure you've heard before, but there's all concern down there about there being one exit out, which is one hundred and fifty second. So our transportation calls for that road to extend to the east to one sixty seventh Avenue. So we would want to make sure nothing happens on that south end of the property that would prevent us from doing that in the future.
Can I ask you a question on that, Mark? So that road's never going in. If this property, because development pays for development and they would pay for that road. And if there's no development there, then that road isn't going to go in. We wouldn't put it in.
So a majority of the road is on a property east of here or east of this parcel. So there would be a little bit of a gap, but I believe the subdivision that's developing to the south puts a majority of that missing piece in. I don't know that I have a map, but
Can we go back to the map?
Yeah.
Nobody wants to see us.
Is it one to the southeast?
So the directly
Like one hundred and eighty third?
There you go. Yeah. So there's kind of three parcels there that are in the city limits. So the one directly south and to the west are part of a project called Cedars East. I believe they have construction approval from us. So they'll actually build a big chunk of that road right there to connect in. So all that leaves is the last parcel to the east of the one the county's proposing. So a majority of that, there might be just a hair that's outside either of those three properties, but the parcel to the east, when they develop, would have to make that connection there. So I still think we can get it through development.
Over to one hundred and sixty seventh is where you're taking it.
Correct. Yeah.
So one hundred and eighty third.
Yes. Yeah, what we're looking for is them to not, you know, when they're doing the the creek restoration, you know, the farther they bring that down, it could impact that right away by creating wetlands or buffers that aren't there. So and I don't believe they're going to do that. I mean, they have to master plan that, but protecting that right away. So we we or developers can do that in the future. So there's that escape route.
Mr. Mayor. Go ahead. I I just thank you again to kind of echo what everyone else is saying, but so the developables that the the area where it could be developed on that twelve point seven. Is that that south side that's adjacent to the homes that are already there?
Yes.
And do you know the the size of that area? I know without, you know, a whole lot of
I would, I would approximate. So the property's twelve point seven acres. And it's approximately a two third, one third split. So
About four.
Four acres.
And you guys, with the expansion of the natural area, do you plan on separating that and and possibly looking at developers to buy that buildable section? Or are you going to just take it all as an act?
I think we're going to take it all as an acquisition and what what we're hoping to do with the master plan process is to help disperse the use. So right now we have a lot of use coming into the golf course near the old clubhouse. And we have a lot of use coming into Salmon Morgan from Dead End Streets in that neighborhood. And so it would be good to get the 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 use dispersed out to different entrance points further to the west, further to the east. And this property helps us to meet one of those goals. Ultimately, it'll be the master plan process and engaging in the community and what we ultimately do with this property.
Thank you.
I I have two questions. So this will be completely maintained by the county. There's no finance burden on the city
Correct.
for this acquisition and any improvements. And those will be county decided, county led as far as what goes on here. And those stakeholders, I'm assuming will mostly be neighbors that help.
Correct. Yeah.
And then
With the the community engagement that we worked through on purchasing the golf course, it was primarily immediate neighbors, but we did, we cast a wide net as we could to the the community in this area.
And while I I very much appreciate you coming out, I agree with Deputy Mayor Bowman. I I believe this has probably been in the works for longer than I think I got the email on Friday, maybe Thursday. So that's a little bit hard. I know I I'm trying better to not spring surprises on council. But just let's just say for theory's sake, we didn't want this. Could we stop it?
I mean, I think that your concerns would be weighed heavily by our council.
That wasn't really the answer to the question.
So the I don't make those decisions. My council does.
Well, I think I know how that go. All right. I didn't mean to put you on the spot there. I know you're, you know, but yeah. Okay. Any other comments, questions?
Staff need from us.
They're looking for a consensus. We're calling for consensus for council support of the acquisition by the county. So you just want to do thumbs up or you want to do a vote? What do we want to do? Just thumbs up? Thumbs down? Looks like you have consensus.
Thank you. And I I believe one one major concern I heard from staff was access on that south end, both for the sewer pump station, but also for the community. So that's something that I'll make sure and relay tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Yeah, you're welcome to stay for the rest, too. Okay, folks. So here we have citizens communication and I will be equally strict on both sides. I am not taking sides on this. I want an orderly, respectful conversation. That's really my goal here. That's my only goal. Okay? Everybody who signed up gets to be heard for one minute. I will now open the meeting for citizens communications. Individuals are limited to one minute to provide comments. This time is an opportunity to hear from members of the public in a limited public forum and not an opportunity for extended comments or dialogue. Although the city council desires to allow the opportunity for public comment, the business of the city must proceed in orderly, timely manner. The council may not be able to respond to individual comments and may refer citizens to a staff member to assist. Do we have anybody online that went? That was wanting to comment before we start with the
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so I'm going to be calling up two names. I'll call up the first person to talk. And if the second person could come up and stand and be ready, so we can get through this. We have a stack. I'm sorry, what? Just say what you're It can you say it in the mic? I I can't hear. Is there something I'm doing wrong? Okay. This is citizen communications on what they want to speak. Oh. I'm not sure what you're asking, Mr. Sorry. Okay, first up, Alex from Brush Prairie. Jessica Cole, you're on deck. Go ahead, sir. And please, just before you start, I just want to cheers, cheers, claps, all that, please. Just let everybody have their piece. Respect this gentleman's one minute and he'll respect yours.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Thanks for hearing us tonight. I just want to share my views on this. This is not about inclusion. This is about invasion. Invasion of privacy. Men claiming to be women so they can go into women's bathroom and watch them shower and change. Invasion invasion of women's athletics. Men claiming to be women so they can go into women's sports and win the prizes. Invasion of children's innocence, lying to children psychologically, molesting them and causing them confusion about the gender God created them to to be and that they were born with. And promoting them to become physically mutilated by cutting off their sex organs and changing their gender. Invasion of peace in this beautiful city of Battleground. I I have had dialogue with these people that are behind this movement for this proclamation. And I I have tried to just share my viewpoint with them. I don't hate these people. I don't hate anybody. I love everybody. And I've never found anybody that had filled with more hate. And I've never been cussed at more. I've never been screamed at more, you know, and so I just ask you that you'd please vote no on this because the Bible says that
All right, we're
Thank you very much. Please vote no.
And just so everybody knows, the votes already happened. The proclamation's not being read, just to make, to be clear, okay? And what? No, no, ma'am? Sorry, who who said that? I thought, I'm sorry. Jessica?
I just want to clarify that council member Ferrer, I didn't, you were not upfront with me. You waited till the end of the conversation to bring it up. I had my hopes up high to do a unity one. And then when I also said I wanted to do a pride proclamation with LGBTQ in a little bit and community, you dropped me like a hot potato. I went home, I called my parents and I cried my eyeballs out. I want to say thank you to the councilors that have supported this the last two years. I am the only person behind this and the only people that spoke to me were a couple of people here. Nobody else in this room. To those councilors who oppose the proclamation to your faith, I understand the challenges you face. As I too have worked through issues with my faith and LGBTQ acceptance. If I, along with many others, could have navigated this journey, you could as well, and you still can. This is about commitment to equality, human rights and declaration, dedication to justice and inclusivity. You talked about the prayer at Christmas time. It wasn't required for me to approach any of you, but I chose to because I'm a kind person and I really wanted this to work. I will be back. I will not be put down. Thank you so much for everyone who wrote in and support and who is here. Sorry. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next up, we have Win Grich from Vancouver. On deck is Jasmine Violet. Oh, I I can't read that last name. I'm sorry.
My name is Win Gersich and I came here tonight because I want people to understand what this trans thing is all about. I was a hairdresser in San Francisco. A lot of crazy things go on there. But when Fauci actually But when Fauci actually asked for um, promiscuous homotex will take the hepatitis B shot, he put HIV in the shot and killed most of the people that I know. And it was kind of a, it was sickening because I have read this out of Behold a Pale Horse, chapter nine by um, William Cooper. I put it on public record and I read about that. And what Fauci did the same with this COVID vaccine is the same thing. He put Vids in it, B A I D S, and they're treating long-term COVID with AIDS drugs. And one of the things too is Roundup makes people, what it does, it, it affects your hormones and causes endocrine interruptors. And Roundup causes people to be trans. So if you're not eating organic food and we don't get Roundup banned statewide or nationally.
Five seconds.
I will put this stuff on public record. They're now making Roundup, uh, they're making different kinds of uh, it RNA pesticides by Monsanto. I'll put.
All right, thank you. Jasmine, you're up. Jay Allen, you're on deck.
I'm hi, I'm Jasmine. My last name is Violet. Um, I was here to encourage you to go forth with the proclamation. I'm kinda gonna skip forward through what I had written down. Um, there was a comment by a council member that was made that this proclamation causes division amongst marginalized communities. And I stand here as a black and Latino woman within our community to tell you that that's not true. We collectively, as marginalized communities, know that we fight together, we work together, we live together because outside of our communities, others don't understand our oppression. They don't understand what we have to go through, what we have to face, especially walking down the streets of Battleground where I and my children have constantly been racially accosted by people who drive off with their Jesus fish stickers on their car. And I would encourage you to next year not use our oppression to further your own agendas. Thank you.
Please, no clapping. All right. Thank you, Jasmine. Jay, you're up. Ally, you're on deck. Thank you, everybody for being respectful. I really appreciate it. I know this is emotional and I really do appreciate. Thank you. I'm sorry, my, his, oh, oh, we don't have the presenter's mic. I'm sorry. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm a taxpayer and a voter and uh, property owner in Battleground. I'm also a Christian. Uh, I appreciate the fact that uh, the defense of minorities, uh, my people were minorities in Europe. Uh, but as a Christian, I don't think it exu- it, it ex- it's loving to, to proclaim that one sin is acceptable when others aren't. And uh, I thank the three members who uh, voted. And uh, the floor, I thank you for, for showing your disdain.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Ally, you're up. John Barney, you're on deck. Appreciate the one minute time.
I was really hoping I would be able to say thank you to all of you. I do say thank you to the four of you. Um, again, just like the email I sent you, I am at a loss as to which of these things that you find controversial, like supporting dignity, equality and fundamental civil and human rights for all in our community. Demonstrating our community's values of caring and fairness by treating all citizens, including the LGBTQ community with respect and kindness through family and community inclusion. Maybe that's controversial. I don't know. I'm really disappointed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ally. John Barney, you're up. Hi, Keaton Thomas, I'm sorry, uh, you're on deck.
Thank you. Um, I just have a little bit to read here and I just wanna say that no matter what side you stand on, I love you. Do not hate you and I forgive you for any hatred you may have for me. This is from Romans one, uh, for the wrath of God is revealed from heaven against all ungodliness and unrighteousness of men who suppress the truth and unrighteousness because what may be known of God is manifest in them for God has shown it to them. For since the creation of the world, his invisible attributes are clearly seen, being understood by the things that are made even as eternal power and godhead so that they are without an excuse. And then I'll skip down, but he does address homosexuality and the people that support it. Uh, so here's the, the last verse. Who knowing the righteous judgment of God that those who practice such things are deserving of death, not only do the same, but also approve of those who practice them. So I just encourage you to repent and trust in Jesus. And yeah, he's the only way and choose life, not death. Love you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Keaton, you're up. Jennifer, I know you're on deck.
Take a swig of water real quick, sorry.
We'll pause your time, sir. Sorry about that.
Okay, so what is the definition of love? Let's look to the scripture for that. Love is patient and kind. Love does not envy or boast. It is not arrogant or rude. It does not insist on its own way. It is not irritable or resentful. It does not rejoice at wrongdoing, but rejoices with the truth. The world commands us Christians to rejoice in their sexual sins and perverted lives, to ignore the very foundation of truth that holds us in our faith to the Lord. We are not only mocked when we don't allow them to parade naked in streets with their genitalia flopping everywhere for kids to see, but our livelihoods are threatened and we are, and we risk unconstitutional jail times, fines and even frozen bank accounts. What possesses a teacher in Seattle to take children to a sex shop or to talk to children about the same-sex relations going so far as to show them diagram, uh, detailed diagrams and how-to pictures and how to pleasure themselves and each other at ages as low as eight? What sexual degeneracy salivates at the thought of a child pole dancing or grinding against a drag queen at storytime event in the library? Why would we promote the degeneracy of barely two percent of America when we are Christians and we are beholden to one truth? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jennifer, you're up. John Lay, you're on deck.
Good eat, excuse me, good evening, uh, Mayor and members of the council. I first wanna say that I'm really sorry that you received email, uh, emails with a lot of hate. Um, I wanna remind you that people of the faith community are not perfect. And we speak out of emotion and say things at times we probably shouldn't say. But I also want to let you know that um, being forced to um, embrace and celebrate lifestyles and activities that um, go against our deeply held religious beliefs, which is a good uh, portion of our community, does not foster communication. I know a few people in the LGBTQ community and they are wonderful people and very nice. And I welcome communication. Um, but uh, vitriol and pitting one group against another is not productive like we saw today. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, John Lay, you're up. David, I'm struggling with the last name. Alzy something.
Members of the council, a lot of good people are here to express their concerns regarding the pride proclamation. Over the past decade or two, we have seen far too much sexualization of our children in government-funded schools and activities. I would like to paraphrase Dr. Jordan Peterson. If your pride is based on your sexuality, you've reduced your identity to a person's most immature and hedonistic part of the human experience. For people of faith, pride is one of the seven deadly sins. But for our community, there are many more important things we should express pride in. I take pride in our police officers as well as our firefighters. How about passing a resolution of pride for the fact that Battleground High School band teacher, Greg McKelby, has been chosen as the grand marshal of the Rose Festival Parade? Now that is something battleground citizens should truly be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. David, if I, if you're still here, A L U. Dave, okay, David, we got David and then.
What you guys doing?
Vern Jerm- Jermearica, you're up.
Real quick, before I get started, what's the council's uh, feelings about profanity?
Uh, let's try to limit it.
So whoa, 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 what are we doing? You already started running. It was a question before I got started. Can we restart, please?
Go ahead, sir.
Can we not restart?
Go ahead.
Well, awesome, great. Cool. Okay, so uh, initially I was gonna come up here and I wanted to talk about how as a parent with kids in battleground schools, how important it is for them to be seen and felt and included. Uh, also about that we uh, we have taken in a foster child, a queer, trans child whose mother attempted to unalive them. Uh, basically, you know, all this stuff that you guys are saying, right? You say that uh, oh, God says, you know, man who lays with man should be dead, right? These are death threats. These, these have actual real things on the community. And I'm looking at some of you because some of you know me and I know some of you, right? And I see the shit in your Telegram chats, right? We see your flagrant profanity. We see your flagrant use of hate speech. Um, so just coming from the faggot who drinks Roundup straight out of the bottle, I'd just like to let you know, if you're not going to let us have pride, we will give you wrath.
Thanks. Let's try to hold it in, hold the emotions in if we can. Sir Vern, Jermearica, James. So I'm sorry, I apologize. And James Clark, you're up.
Thank you for letting me speak. Uh, as you can see, this is a bone of contention with many people. This is why all the churches have showed up tonight and all these Christians.
Hold on, can we pause it one second? Can we hold down the uh, conversations? I, I'm having trouble hearing this gentleman.
Everybody in the back here, all of you in front, myself, we're all sinners. The only difference is we follow a Savior, Jesus Christ. The Bible is the word of God for us and we follow it. Whether we like it or not, we've chose to follow Jesus. As a follower of Jesus, we sin daily, just like everybody here. But the ultimate price is paid by him dying on the cross. Rose again came back and he has the chance for everlasting life. Now, when I see people like this that blatantly blaspheme God, I know where they're going and our heart goes out to them. We pray for them and we love them. We tell them the truth because we love them.
Thank you, sir. James Clark, you're up. Wendy Rush, you're on deck.
Hello, I had to basically condense this a bit, but um, I have friends and clients who escaped totalitarian regimes like those in Vietnam, North Korea, China and the former Soviet Union. And many of these immigrants tell me that identic- identity politics ideologies like queer theory and critical race theory are rooted in the Maoism and Marxism that they fled. These civilization destroying ideologies hide behind civil rights that, so that those promoting those idea ideologies can cause regular, kind-hearted people to destroy the country they live in by behaving as what Vladimir Lenin referred to as useful idiots. The rollback of dedicate decades of hard-won protections for female spaces and sports, leading to the displacement of females by female identifying males is just one example of how this is manifesting in our culture. The push towards compelled speech such as the mandating the use of preferred pronouns is another such example. These controversial issues. Divisive. Thanks.
It's okay. I was gonna give you five seconds, right? You weren't looking up at the time, so I was trying to give you a heads up.
So anyway, I, I would, I guess I'll just read the last sentence. The bigger picture is that we're watching the flowered piven strategy unfolding against our country using a variety of these tactics.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Thank you, sir. Wendy Rush, you're up. David Madala, you're on deck.
I'd just like to say thank you to the counselors that are representing what I suspect might be the majority. I think the unfortunate thing here, and I think it was reflected in Mr. Cortez's um, shaming of any counselors that may have told people about this proclamation. I knew about it because I know it's been circulating around Washington State with other cities. That's how I was aware that June was coming. It probably would happen again like it did last time. But I think that if we were to put this before Facebook, before the community, somehow do a town hall, maybe there'd be a better reflection because I do think the majority should be represented and I support that. I know this is personal to a lot of people and I empathize with that for you. But I also think that sometimes these things that are divisive because of what our community has already experienced with the sex ed fight of twenty eighteen, which I know Mayor Troy is familiar with, um, that the more we can build towards harmony, the better. And I hope this does it somehow.
David Madle, uh, David Madley, you're up. Daniel Madala, you're on deck. I don't know who's talking, but.
Thank you guys for uh, thanks, thank you everybody who stood up against this homosexual immorality. Yesterday I peacefully protested LGBTQ plus pride event and I realized how filled with hate some of these people really are. Our small group was repeatedly cussed out and we heard things like, I hate you, go kill yourself and other terrible things. It was the most hateful atmosphere I've ever been in and yet the LGBTQ plus community uses the phrase love wins. I witnessed loads and loads of utter hatred from this wicked group that supports immorality. Leviticus twenty thirteen says, if a man also lie with mankind as he lieth with a woman, both of them have committed an abomination. They shall surely be put to death. Their blood shall be upon them. One of the wisest men that walked the face of the earth said in Proverbs sixteen eighteen, pride goeth before destruction and unholy spirit before fall. Mark ten six, but from the beginning of the creation, God made them male and female. It is our righteous responsibility to say absolutely no, 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 no to homosexuality, no to immorality, no to these abominable heresies. What's next? This is abomination and a spit in God's face. I will be praying for everyone in support of this wickedness that you will be awakened, repent of your sins, turn to Jesus, realize what is true, true and right.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, I hope you all will be back.
Daniel Madala, you're up. Tyler Long, you're on deck.
I was peaceful protesting at the La Center Pride Walk on Sunday, June second. I assumed by reading the signs they were loving people, but I've never been cussed at more. They actually made threats against my mom multiple times in a perverted way and she wasn't even there. They were very angry, hateful people, the most hate I have ever seen. I was told, why don't you go kill yourself? I hate you. I thought these were loving people. They are the opposite of what their slogans say, love wins. Cursing and mocking God, mocking me for standing up for the truth. And this was the majority of the people rudely blocking me from the sidewalk and pushing me into the street. In their own words, they said, we are proud to be perverting children, proud to change the kids' genders. Few of these people even claim to be Antifa. God loves these people, but he hates their sin. God destroyed Sodom and Gomorrah because of their wickedness and one of the biggest sins was homosexuality. The Bible says, um, but from the beginning of creation, God made them male and female. And thank you for voting against this proclamation and thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, sir. Tyler Long, you're up. Amy Vale, you're on deck.
Obviously, I was originally gonna speak against this proclamation and there's no need to do that, but I will discuss it briefly. Uh, I wanna thank the people behind us for illustrating so clearly that this is not about rights. This is not about respect. This is not about anti-bullying. It's about a totalitarian movement. Only one person in this room is utter threats. The other person is unwilling to even talk to people. I'll talk to anybody outside. Now, what's more concerning, now that the proclamation is shot down, is the behavior of you three in the middle. You wanna degrade us? Tell us to seek therapy? Yeah, good. Yeah. Well, guess what? You wanna say that our opinion doesn't matter because we weren't here for other past things? Fine. Guess what? We voted every election, but guess what? We're not asleep any longer. Now we're awake. Okay? Now we're gonna watch every move you make. Okay? So you can continue to be cowards. I know why you voted the way you did, cuz these people scare ya. No, it's true. You're cowards. But do the right thing, repent. You have no authority other than what's given to you by Jesus Christ. That's what he said to Pontius Pilate in John nineteen eleven.
Thank you, sir. Amy, Amy, order, 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 order. Hey, 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 hey. Please, don't, no dude, no, no. Sir, you got one more chance. Okay, please, please don't make me kick anybody out, okay? I'm just, what I'm trying, ma'am? I've had it, okay? If either one of you interrupts any speaker or talks after, I'm gonna ask the chief to escort you out. Do you understand? Otherwise I escort the whole room out. I can either pick one of you two or the whole room. I'd rather not do that. Please. Sorry, everybody. I'm trying to make this fair and as calm as I can. And uh, some of you are not making it easy. Aim, uh, Kimberly Gohean, you're on deck. Sorry, Amy, I didn't mean to. No, no, you're fine. You're, you're up. I'm sorry, I just didn't mean to talk over you. My bad.
That's okay. Thank you, council members. I, uh, I thank you for the opportunity to give the community time to speak. Um, I do have to read something um, from the Bible, Genesis twelve, Genesis nine, nine. Behold, I established my covenant with you and your offspring after you, and with every living creature that is with you, the birds, the livestock and every beast of the earth with you, as many as come out of the ark, it is for every beast of the earth, I establish my covenant with you, that I will never again shall all flesh be cut off by the waters of the flood and never again shall there be a flood to destroy all of the earth. And God said, this is the sign of the covenant that I make between me and you and every living creature that is with you for all future generations. I have set my bow in the cloud and it shall be a sign of the covenant between me and the earth. The rainbow belongs to the Lord. And I completely believe in unity, but this proclamation is divisive. I absolutely believe it is and I applaud every single one of you counselors that stood up with boldness and courage to vote for what's right. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Kimberly is up and just Kathy, there's no last name on it, just Kathy is on deck.
Hi, Kimberly Gohean Elbin, live citizen of Clark County. Uh, I'm no longer a battleground citizen, but I am a graduate. Uh, and I am a tiger. Uh, we were afforded the uh, constitution and our forefathers warned us to assemble en masse for our first uh, amendment rights and backed up with our second amendment rights to uh, keep peace. Um, so and I'm talking about militia, not, not who uh, governs here. So we stand against a government that rules over the, the we, the people instead of following the constitution. The elected take an oath. the elected take an oath to follow. Yet our forefathers warned us that government wants to rule over a free people. The LBGQ+ agenda is part of an even deeper agenda to force the citizens of Clark County and across America to accept the illegal immigrants. An example of force is when Clark County Board of Health and the council put on record the words "white supremacist." And if I don't want illegal immigrants, no matter what color they are here in America, I will be deemed a white supremacist. Thank you.
Thank you for holding to the time. Kathy, you're up. Mark Walker, you're on deck.
Thank you to the three council members that had the courage today. I'm not gonna speak to the proclamation. People before me did that well. I want to speak to the three of you. And the tone of this meeting that's being led, it's unacceptable, and we deserve an apology. You grouped us all together as we're all second graders? And the examples of the controversial issues that were brought up were very poor. This is against morals? People, you were shocked that people showed up? You should be shocked that people don't show up. I think there needs to be some discussion, and one of them might be a recall here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Walker, you're up. Leif, you're on deck. We can get the, it sounds like Mark Walker's not here, so Justine, you're on deck. So, Leif, you're up.
Thank you all for whoever voted against it. Thank you. 1 Corinthians 7:2 says, "Nevertheless, to avoid fornication let every man have his own wife, and every woman have her own husband." I think we should be friendly to all people, but this issue of pride is a sin issue. And to, if this proclamation would have went into hand or passed, I think that it would have incited more violence and less, more discrimination, more violence, and it wouldn't have been a good thing. Roughly 4,000 years ago, a city was destroyed because of wickedness, and we don't want that to happen to battleground, do we? This city deserves better, and the pride proclamation does not, it does not represent most of the people in battleground. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Justine, you're up. Olga Fushenko, you're on deck.
Hello, mayor. Hello, council. We are all citizens here on Earth. And we, you've been given this authority to serve, as elected officials, to serve the community and listen to the community, and that majority voice is really important to be heard. So with that said, with agendas that are about sexuality should not be in city government, period. We should be talking about policies, budgets, those kind of things. That's why this proclamation was such a big deal to the public. And with that said, our founding fathers, like John Adams, he started out and said, "Public virtue cannot exist in a nation without private virtue." And public virtue is the only foundation of our republic. So with that said, the rainbow belongs to God, and when these people distort it, it's a discrimination against the people that love God and love this country, because that's what it's all about. And so, yes, respect and freedom is really important. So God bless this battleground and all of you.
Thank you. Olga, you're up. Tracy, you're on deck. Tracy Livens, that's all I got, sorry.
Good evening, honorable councilors and mayor of the city. I'm so privileged to be here with you. I came from Russia 34 years ago, and I love America. I love this freedom. I love this opportunity, that everyone can come in a city and tell what they have in their hearts. I'm praising God, first of all, because He was with us. And for this, what you make a decision to put down, I'm so thankful. Thank God and praise God. And thank you for this privilege. What I was planning to say, they already said about rainbow, about God, I would like to say, we are human beings, and who really wants to serve the Lord and be in heaven in eternal life, all of us. God bless you all.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Tracy, you're up. James Crockett, you get to close this out.
Oh, much like someone else here who said, "I am a taxpayer in battleground. I'm a voter in battleground. I'm a property owner in battleground." And this one's gonna blow your mind. I'm a Christian in battleground, and we love the same God, and I just want to thank you so much for what you have done for the proclamation for the police, for the proclamation that you have done for Latinos in the past. Thank you. That is your job to protect those of us that are citizens in this city, and I'm asking you to continue to do that for us, please. That is what we want you to do. And I want you, you can have whatever morals you want and whatever beliefs you want. That is fine. Put in a proclamation for that, and I will support you, okay? Because I also want you to be protected for those beliefs, all right? And so do that. I encourage you, do that. So thank you for that. I appreciate it. Please continue to protect everyone in your job. That is what you're elected to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Last up, James Crockett. Hopefully, I got that last name right.
Close enough. Thank you, everybody. I wasn't planning on closing this out. I was hoping I'd have more people that would come up here and talk after me. I am not LGBTQ myself, but I believe in equality and acceptance for all members of my community, whether or not they look like me or act like me or live like me or love like me. Other cities such as Ridgefield and Vancouver have already endorsed a proclamation of support for this movement. Why should battleground be any different than them? Why should citizens here not get all the protections they are due under the law, as well as the support of their elected representatives? Now, there's a lot of people in here, a lot of people who aren't in here, who would have been afraid to come up here and talk. They would have been afraid to come up here and say what they say, especially after they've heard the parade of what we've heard tonight. And just know that there are people in this community who will stand up, and we will speak for you when you need them to do so, and I'm here for you. Thank you so much for your time, and thank you for tonight.
Thank you, sir. All right, next up, we have the consent agenda. Consent agenda consists of A, City Council regular meeting minutes of May 20th, claim vouchers, B and C, D is payroll, E is the Northeast 92nd Avenue Pump Station, F, General Sewer Plan, G, Street Preservation Program, H, Southwest Opioid Abatement Council. Does any counselor believe any item needs to be withdrawn from the consent agenda? I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Some pretty important stuff in there. Thank you for getting that on there, Mark. Do we have any communications yet to be presented to council regarding business items, Madam Clerk?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, that moves us on to Engineer Hersick. I try to use that throughout the year, about the Parkway Main Intersection Improvements. Now, this was on the consent agenda, and it's my fault it's off, so I'll apologize now. I just know I've gotten a lot of questions about that intersection, and I wanted to just give the opportunity to let the city know that this is coming forward and what it's going to consist of.
No, it sounds good. Good evening, council. So the project in front of you tonight is for approval for design of the improvements at Parkway and Main. Some of those will include the flashing yellow or doghouse signals. Essentially, they both provide both permitted and protected left turns, depending on the traffic situations. Our cabinet and all the signal equipment is outdated, so the project will update all of that. The project will also incorporate any recommendations from the Old Town Plan, so this project will kind of get slow-rolled just to make sure that any outcomes from that project get incorporated into this. We'll also replace all four of the ADA ramps so they meet current standard, and then melonfill the intersection. As you've seen, we've melonfilled pretty much all sides, and we're leaving the intersection for this project, so that's pretty much the long and short of what that does to improve this intersection.
One question that I have, those, I'd call them fa bricks that, faux, false bricks, whatever you want to call them, that we have to paint continually that really don't look like bricks? Are we gonna continue to, is it just gonna be road?
Correct. It will be taken out and be a road. Again, we'll accommodate anything that the Old Town Plan recommends, but those type of crosswalks are actually not legal anymore, so as we're doing this, we would take that out.
Okay. Any other questions on this? I know it's a pretty, but I know we all get a lot of questions about this intersection on council, so. All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for approval of this. Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, and let's take, we're at 8:30. We normally take a five-minute break here, so we'll take a five-minute break and come back at 8:36. So, and we'll be back with Mr. Hersick on the Transportation Improvement Program. Everybody could sit down, please. Take your seats. We're gonna start the meeting here shortly. Please, take your seats. Everybody, please, conversations and seats. Conversations need to end, seats need to begin. Even the hallway, please, guys. We can hear you in here. Thank you. We can't shut the door in a public meeting, so. All right. We're back in order. Mr. Hersick, with our Transportation Improvement Program, and Brownie Points, everybody's still here. Yeah.
All right.
Isn't that still a thing?
All right, good evening again, council. We're gonna talk about the 2025, 2030 six-year TIP. So why do we do this? So RCW requires that all cities to have an annually update their six-year TIP, which I first of each year. It is also required for both state and federal grants. So we get a lot of questions about the layout of the TIP, so the order of it's not dictated by state law. Typically, the city's preference is the funded projects at the beginning, and then the non-funded projects after. So changes from last year, we have several new projects. We have the First Street Sidewalk Improvements, Phase Two, which is the CDBG project. We have North Parkway Avenue Pathway, which is the newest CDBG project. Southwest 20th Avenue Path, the Southeast Clark Avenue Extension, so that's an older CDBG project that we can move forward on. And then Scott and Way in the 13th Avenue Intersection Improvements, that's by Walmart. That's in intersections that's kind of risen to the top in the accident rates, so it's one we've started to look at, and we've started asking for state grants for. So those have all been added to the list. The next steps for the TIP is the public hearing and motion will be at the next meeting in June. And I'm happy to answer any questions, and I have a map in case that helps anyone.
Well, I have a lot of questions, so I'll let you go first.
We'll just, we'll just start down at that end and roll down. How's that?
She probably only has like one where I was like...
Oh, well, we're good. Go ahead. You're up.
Okay, okay, you asked for it. So I'm looking at number three. This is Northwest 20th Avenue and Northwest 9th Street. So you got 20th and 9th, right? Um, and Northwest Ninth Street. So you got Twentieth and Ninth, right? Um, I don't wanna, what's gonna be going on with that? It just says Twentieth and Ninth.
Um, so that's a compact roundabout, so.
Okay.
It's, um, it's like a big version, but small and essentially can be fit within the existing right-of-way. Um, and that's a city safety grant. We had several pedestrian, uh, accidents there, um, so we were able to get a federal grant to cover that project.
Uh, okay, that's why, that's, I got to talk to her and she did mention that, that this was money, that was a grant that was given to us. So now we're kind of stuck with this, even though we haven't had a lot of incidents. I don't think we've had any since like twenty sixteen or even earlier.
The city safety grant only covers if you've had, uh, issues in the last, I think, three or four years, so.
Okay.
It's more recent than that.
So that, I guess that's why that one's taking a precedence over number fourteen, which is the whole Twentieth from Main Street to two thirty-nine.
Oh, oh, they're not in order of how we're going to do them. Their, their order is random. Just.
Right, yeah.
And the grant part, that grant, that particular grant program would not have covered Twentieth.
Right, right. Yeah, 'cause while I was looking at the dates and like, this one's gonna be done by twenty twenty-six and then the whole stretch of Twentieth from Main Street to the ninth, that's going to help. That should be finished, completed by twenty twenty-eight.
And right now, that's an unfunded project, so that continues to push based on.
Needing more grants.
Until there's grant or some sort of funding for it.
Okay.
So, real quick, Victoria, can you explain the six-year TIP and how it, how it works so that we? That these are not funded projects, these are projects that are, have to be on there so we can go after funding.
Correct, correct.
Not that part, I got that part. I was just wondering, I just, that was my only one in regards to why this one, yeah, so the next one.
And it's just something to keep in mind that there's, you know, while we'd like to get funding for all of them, certain grant programs cover certain things, so. You know, that is a question we get often. It's like, why did you go for a grant for this? Well, it's because the grant would only cover that project, it wouldn't cover others, so.
Right.
It's kind of making sure you go after the right grants for the right projects.
Understood, understood. Okay, so then, um, number, and I was wanting to get ahold of you today, so I wouldn't be taking up everybody's time here, so I do apologize. Um, number, uh, seven and eight, it was talking about the Chilachi Prairie Rail with the trail, phase one and two, is that? I mean, 'cause we've got some stuff going on, counties deciding on, so we can't, when you, when I see trail, I don't think you can have a railroad with a trail. And we don't even know for sure what's going on with that.
So you can, so, um, these are actually older grants that we received. Um, I wanna say at least five years ago, if not longer. Um. The county has a plan for a trails, uh, with rails. Um, they built the first phase of that at Battleground Lake State Park to the south. And so the ultimate intent of this project is to connect up to that point, so you could walk or bike up to the lake. Um. Back at that time, we had developed plans for the project and the county's agreement with the railroad operator pretty much gave him full authority over that right-of-way, and we could just never get to a spot where they agreed with our plan, so ultimately, we put a pause on it. Um, and county operator got in their lawsuit, that took several years. They've resolved it, but clearly there's other issues going on, as I'm sure you've seen in the media. Um, so these continue to sit here in case that ever works itself out where we could move forward with the project.
So how is it we still have, we still have that grant money and we've been sitting on it for five years? How's that work?
So we had to, or we actually have the design grant, so the design grant is good for ten years.
Okay. I, yeah, 'cause I'm just curious to know how that's gonna work. How do you put a trail next to a train? That's just. So, okay.
Yeah, I mean, the rail rules would allow the trail to go in, there's, they have a significant amount of right-of-way and.
Had to be like, it was only allowed if the, if the rail was no longer.
No, there's, there's a way to do both and meet all the requirements.
Okay. So is the issue, you may have just said this, but the issue is with the, the person that's leasing the railroad?
Correct, the operator.
So, okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
No, I had a lot more, but.
Well, yeah, what confused me the first time that I saw this list was it's not in order of priority.
Oh, yeah, I know, yeah.
So, especially and for the audience, you see, you see numbers on here where not, you know, number one is not first and whatever, number twenty-seven is not last.
No, I caught that real quick when, yeah.
What, um.
Some things are.
Can you talk more about, uh, the thirty-one, uh, the, the Walmart intersection there? I know, I know we've talked previously about that.
Yeah, so, um, obviously, it's becoming more and more heavily traffic as the commercial areas build out there. Um, we regularly look at the accident reports just to see, you know. Also, you pick up things, and so we looked at that as part of the city safety grant process this last time through. Um, and there's a calculation that you do for accident rates to tell you if something's bad or, you know, where it's at, and so this equation, essentially, if you're over one, that's something you really wanna look at. We were under one, but it was getting close. I don't remember the number off the top of my head, point seven, point eight, something like that. Um, so definitely one to start watching. Um, you know, again, we believe the solution is likely a roundabout at that location that's got significant right-of-way. Um, there's not enough trips really to justify a traffic signal. Um, you just have a lot of delay and, and not for good reason, but, um, a roundabout would be a safe solution and, and deal with all the accidents and um, I believe we've asked at least once now through state legislature for a grant for design in the most recent and you know, I assume that will keep going forward.
Do we take, do we take speed into consideration on those? I know, I know accidents are, you know, they, that's the, that's the hard part, right, when we're, whether we're asking DOJ for police officers, they want more crime and we want less crime, and so we can't get a grant for that. So is it the same with this? That it's, it's only accident-driven or do we have data that's in there for? Um, how fast people are driving in that area too?
We do, so that's part of what we look at. So we've got the speed limit set at twenty-five miles per hour on all legs and, um, the again, don't remember it off the top of my head, but I believe we're thirty, thirty-five, you know, frequently with a lot of vehicles, so having that kind of big gap between what the speed limits at can help with the grant process.
Cause that's part of the, that's part of the reason you can't get out there is speed. If they're doing twenty-five, it'd be easier to get out, but, and it's kind of a blind corner as they're coming flying around there, so.
Anybody else? Follow up on, uh, a passion project of Mayor McCoy and my own, myself. Where are we at on the, uh, number twenty-nine, the twentieth path? We're, we're at a spot where I'm gonna lose my bet to former Mayor Johnson, I believe.
So we.
Twenty thirty.
We submitted the permit, uh, so it's called a JARPA, and essentially, when you submit it, it goes to the, all the environmental agencies that would have a say in it. Um, about a week after that, uh, we met on-site with the Corps and Ecology. Uh, Corps didn't really seem to have any concerns about the project. Um, Ecology had a little bit, but they were mostly, um, worried about a DNR issue, not actually an ecology issue. Um, so our biologists will be working through that, but, um, the goal is to get that permit, um, this summer and then begin construction. I still would like to have it done by the end of the year, but there's always something weird that pops up, so, you know, we'll keep pushing to, to get it done and, and hopefully.
So when you were talking about the one up above that twenty-eighth, it says Parkway Avenue Pathway Onstorf to North Twenty-Fifth, what's the pathway? Is that something that, are you talking about, that wouldn't be sidewalks with?
Yeah, so what we're, that's a, our most recent CDBG project, and that would be asphalt paths in between where there're sidewalks. So there's a new subdivision up on the southeast corner of Onstorf and Twenty-Fifth. There's another one, essentially, you skip a property and they built, and then there's one that's just north of the Catholic Church, and so we're building an asphalt path that connects all of those so that you can get up to, uh, Twenty-Fifth Street and can get all the way down to, uh, Main Street. That's the one we got just recently, yep.
With, with that pathway and the Twentieth, I believe, that just leaves us, well, if, uh, everybody would stop catching salmon in the railroad ditch and we could get grace done. Um, that just leaves us one more, one more north-south arterial, I, I believe, and then most of our, uh, big big ones are connected with pathways. And for those that aren't aware, the twenty-ninth, that council member over, the number twenty-nine that council member Overholzer mentioned is a pathway, uh, on Twentieth there that has no shoulder, no sidewalk. That would connect to the, uh, Walmart path that ends mysteriously. So.
Which, yeah, it said it went up to, they're gonna, it showed that it was going up to six, but then when I was looking at it, it actually stops at Seventh Court. So are we gonna be changing the sideways?
There's sidewalk up there.
Yeah, up until, but there's sidewalk, sidewalk up until Seventh Court, and there was saying on, what was it, twenty-eight? Uh, or twenty-nine, it was talking about, it was going from Scotten to Sixth, so, um, but there's sidewalk from Seventh Court to Sixth, so I'm like, are we gonna be changing any sidewalks to make them kind of?
No, in, in this document, you generally, um, go to the bigger intersections, plus you go a little bit past the project just because it incorporates. When you're looking especially environmentally, you look at the project and just pass it, 'cause there's things that pop up, but what we've seen so far is the sidewalk that's there should be fine, so it will really connect. We are, I believe, looking at the actual crosswalk there, um, at Six, just because that's where the main part of the side, that's also part of why it's in there, but yeah, that, it's pretty standard just to go a little bit past the, the main intersections.
Yeah, the seniors like to cross.
Correct.
Scooter gang.
Um, and I noticed one other thing, I saw on there that you guys were talking about the Rasmussen intersection, but I didn't see anything on there, maybe I, um, I'm overlooking it, nothing that talks about the repairs of Rasmussen.
So this is a capital document, uh, repairs are, um, R and R, so it's, it's not, not covered by this particular document.
Okay. Good to hear, 'cause that road's pretty chewed up.
Well, as always, let me know if there's any time I need to call up Ecology to, uh, help on a permit. More happy to drive up there if needed. Councilmember Overholzer, I'm sure, will ride shotgun. All right. Any other questions for this plan?
I'll ask him stuff.
What's that?
I'll talk to him more about it later.
Yeah. There'll be, uh, uh, next up is to have a public hearing on this, so, uh, there'll be another chance. We, we're not just touching this once, we see this several times, so. Okay. Yeah. Uh, takes us into administrative reports? And Old Town Revitalization Plan Project?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have three quick, uh, administrative reports. We'll start with Kristen, who's gonna discuss the Old Town Revitalization Plan and the engagement, uh, community engagement meeting that's coming up.
Good evening. I just wanted to share with council that next Wednesday, which is June twelfth, we'll have an evening meeting open to the public. Um, it's to help share the Old Town Revitalization Subarea Plan and to start to get community feedback, um, thoughts on the i- ideas for the plan and for the future, so that is open to all. It'll be at the Community Center in the Lewis River Room, and it begins at six P M.
Any questions?
It's all your show.
Okay. Next, uh, Mark is going to discuss the street replacement, um, progress report. I know a few of you have seen some new or some replacements out there and asked that Mark give you an update on that, so I'm gonna turn it over to him.
So I know you're not tired of me yet, but, um, so the list of streetlights that we provided to CPU had thirty-four on it, they've got twenty-three done. Uh, there's four of the black decorative Cobra head that they're just about to work on, uh, those will be done this month. Uh, we found three lights that are on active construction sites, so, uh, they're kind of pinned in right at the second, so those will probably wait till a little bit later. Um, there's two more acorn lights that they'll need to do, and I expect those this month as well. Um, and then there's a couple weird situations where we're trying to figure out what to do. Um, and then we've also found a couple more lights that weren't on the list, so, uh, the grand plan after CPU is done, I talked to Alicia and we'd like to send out a message that, uh, 'cause I suspect we don't have all of the ones on the list, so we'll send out something that essentially says, we're done, however, if you're aware of one that didn't get done, let us know so that we can go finish it up, so. That's kind of where we're at and what the plan is.
I have a question, question for you. What's the longest length that a light has been on that list?
I saw one, I was looking at the list about a week ago. This one doesn't have dates on it, my other list does. Um, there was at least one from twenty eighteen.
Okay, I was gonna say, it's been quite a few years.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay, last but not least. I think Robert's got some slide deck to show you some slides. The chief, you, you probably knew that we had received some of the new patrol cars, so I asked him to, uh, show you sort of the theme and the, the wrapping that, that he and his, um, officers came up with and share that with you.
No, thank you, ma'am. Um, first, uh, we just wanted to give you an update, uh, we've got the cards in. Um, and when, what you're looking at on your screen right now is the current, uh, schematics for the, uh, patrol cars. Since we're getting a, uh, large group of them now, I explained to them, the officers and our professional staff, if there's ever a time that you wanted to have, uh, a different look, now would be that time. Uh, so the challenge was to, uh, get everybody involved. Uh, this included, uh, every single person on the police department. Lot of ideas got thrown around. Uh, what we were look, what I was looking for, uh, was something that was gonna be a little bit brighter, uh, a little more identifiable, uh, some more modern. And hopefully you'll agree, uh, with, uh, what I'll show you is, uh, more warm and, and approachable. So, next slide. That's what we came up with. Uh, I think that, uh, it just, uh, stands out just a little bit better. Uh, if you hit one more slide, sir, you'll see the difference. And we hope, uh, that it's something that, uh, you agree, uh, look sharp, uh, that, uh, we can be proud of and, uh, and that'll carry us for many years to come. Uh, and we want to make sure that you saw it before we went to production. Uh, but if you, uh, unless there's any, uh, naysayers, we are ready to, uh, get those, the graphics, uh, cut and, uh, upfitting, uh, beginning, uh, ASAP. Yes, ma'am.
Can we get a Sasquatch on there somewhere? Can you hide it in the forest or something? I mean, that'd be pretty.
He's on there, can't you see him?
Yeah. He's very elusive. Very elusive.
Can we make sure, in the past, we've done this and, um, the companies that we have used owned the graphics? Will you make sure that we own the graphics on this and not whoever designs it for us? So that they don't hold us hostage on their work that they've done, so that it's our graphics?
Absolutely, I'll make sure that we do that and, but a shout out also to, uh, uh, you know, the city leadership, 'cause, uh, they were very supportive with us. Uh, they made sure that, you know, we included everybody from the agency, uh, but we've also felt it was very important to make sure we included you guys too, 'cause it is this group that, that made those cars happen. Uh, we've got a lot of plans, uh, we, we are making a lot of progress, and I hope to be able to keep you updated on even more progress, so thank you.
I have one more question if I can. Um, does this go out to bid for, for the wraps?
Uh, no, it's all one company that's gonna do it. Uh, we're able to find a company that they, uh, historically had used is a minimum six to nine months before they could get us in. We found a company that, um, they're just waiting on the equipment. Uh, we're hoping that, uh, we could start seeing the first one in July.
There is a local company that does very beautiful wraps. They're. Anyways, okay, I just wasn't sure if I should let them know that it's gonna be out to bid and they should bid on it. Thank you.
Looks sharp to me. I'm no graphic artist, so, um, looks great. I'm just curious if there's a if there's a timeline on, uh, maybe getting a two-week temporary hire, uh, to come back to the city. Um, do we need some sort of resolution, some sort of ordinance or? Do we need some sort of resolution, some sort of ordinance or decree from the governor? What exactly do we need to get former Chief Fort back in here to give us those two weeks of tickets that he promised Mr. Bowman, myself and our former mayor?
I'm aware of that and I'm trying to make sure that we keep you guys honest to, to make sure that we can get that delivered just ASAP for a variety of reasons, but things are certainly moving in the right direction.
And, and I just wanna pass on that your officers are very visible. It's been a marked increase. It's been noted. I've had many citizens even starting to complain about tickets. So it's funny how that just takes a 180-degree turn, but they're very visible. Everywhere we go, I, I see at least one officer out. I see him where I used to see him on 20th. And, you know, we didn't use to see officers out sitting there, being present. And just for me personally, it's very appreciated. I thank you for the city's leadership on that.
And, and I'll, I'll thank them as well, as well as the officers. They've been out there really, really working hard, so I'll convey that. Thank you.
You good? That's, that's it? Okay. All right, we'll go on to council communications. I have a couple of things, but I'll open it up to anybody else? All right, go ahead. Deputy Mayor Bowman?
Thank you. Mark, where, where are we at? Did we change the truck parking in the village?
I was not at the meeting, but my understanding was that that got held off until we are doing, I believe, the annual updates. I think the only thing that got changed in the resolution is the, the two-hour kind of over east of here.
Okay, cuz, cuz it has been, I, I received an email from a business out there, Signal Hound. And when we made the truck parking what it is, it, the village wasn't built out as much as it is now. And Signal Hound reached out to me and said that, that they had actually talked to the parking enforcement. Parking enforcement had directed them to come to the city council. And they are having issues with site distances for semi-trucks that are parking along the road there and their employees when they come out. They've had a couple employees almost get hit because of not being able to see the cars coming around and where the trucks are parking. So I know that that's something that, that we had talked about. I think it's probably something we need to look at as a council because I know the village is pretty much built out, out there in the industrial area. And some of those trucks are parking there. I, I forget what the 48 hours and some of them are using it for parking for their business when they should be parking off-site. And I think that we probably need to look at that, especially if it's becoming a safety hazard for people that are working out there. I think there's probably some other people you can get ahold of and find out how it, how it's going. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, I got a couple of things. AWC delegates, does anybody feel like voting at the the annual conference? If so, just reach out. If you don't know what it is, reach out. But we can have three delegates. You're welcome to them. Also, council should have been emailed some potential questions for city manager search. Please do not copy our interim city manager on which questions you want or do not want. But if there are some that you have strong feelings for, let me know and I will pass that along to our search firm to add those questions or delete those questions from what we're going to be asking. So I would like to have that done. We will have an exec session next meeting to go through some dates and to pick the questions. So be prepared for the, on the next executive session, if you have strong feelings about what questions you wanna ask during a city manager search, that you have those ready to go. It will be at the regular business meeting at the end of it. It's usually when I do our execs, so that people don't have to wait for us to be an exec. And finally, there is a grand opening for one of the food cart pods tomorrow at 10:00 AM. The chamber's putting on that I found out just here recently, so I believe they're giving away some free cookies, so if you're available, something fun to do. All, I mean, I know this was fun for everybody, but cookies are also fun, so. Anything else for good order? All right, next meeting is June 17th. There is a study session at 6:00 PM. Regular meeting is at 7:00. This meeting's adjourned. Thank you.